There's a blight that comes through marijuana blight and they have to slow operations for a year. They don't make any money. That's going to be a cost of business for them, but we're not going to suffer by having committed above that 50,000. The FinCom, and I've talked with Lou Ross about this, the FinCom would be able to sort of count on that money and put it into things that are, you're going to want to support over a period of time. The rest of it, they're going to be more careful about because that could fluctuate. But better to have the money and deal with the question of what happens if it fluctuates than not have the money.
And I think it's reasonable to say that regardless of what their actual volume of business is, there would be some costs, that direct costs-
Absolutely.
-that are not affected by the amount of business, how much they're growing and how much they're selling, but just the fact that they're there whether it's an auto patrol or something. But again, you need to read those letters and I think that's a good thing to put in the letters somewhere when we talk to citizens. All those specific words, and we should reference where they're from, the CCB, CCC, whatever, about direct costs. So that everybody knows that that's what we're doing.
Yeah, and I think, I will check these and make sure that these are consistent, but I will tune that up and we'll have an updated version that, from my perspective, would be appropriate for sharing with, and it will be sort of bare bones. It's not going to look like an agreement, but we'll talk about the key terms. So I will do that, have that prepared for Monday. I will get it as soon as I can into your hands, Debbie, for inclusion in the package. Okay?
Okay.
That's great. Thank you.
I'm going to try to summarize just a bit. We've agreed that he's going to go talk to the patents. We've agreed that he's going to put together this letter for presentation Monday then.
And I'm going to call this more of an information sheet.
Okay. Not a letter. That's right.
It's not a letter from us. It's an information sheet, all of which we will have in front of us and can talk about, but then it will be available to give to the reporter so she gets her facts right.
And we've agreed that he's going to address the issue at town meeting when it comes up for the marijuana overlay district.
Right.
Okay. So, yeah, what is, just so we understand, what is being addressed at the meeting? Specifically the HCA or what?
Because it's-
That's what-
Dick, I would be inclined to basically, it would be more or less the same thing that's in the information sheet. I don't expect to go further than that. I won't be able to say. It's more about where we are in the process.
Well, he's not going to have an HCA.
Do we expect, we expect a citizen of the town to come forward and say something specifically about the property they own and what they'd like to do with it? We can't control it. I'm just asking.
You're saying what?
Do we expect that a citizen of the town, somebody who owns Green Meadows-
Okay.
-to come forward at town meeting and put their position on it?
So, let me tell you where that's at. Bob Patton and Chris Sawaki, who are the two ponchos on this operation, and they live in Connecticut. Joanne Patton is the representative who is, she is passive, not part of the management and so on, but she owns the property.
She owns the property. That's what I mean. So she could-
So, and to be honest, if we asked Joanne to speak and she's-
I'm not asking.
No, no, no. I'm just saying, if we asked her to speak, she would. If we said, "I don't think that's necessary," she wouldn't. She's very much into following the recommendations that her, some of the grandsons give her.
The second thing, is there an interest, hold on a second here, is there an interest in this applicant of requesting permission to speak at town meeting?
They're anxious to speak if we want them to speak. If we say this isn't necessary-
That's it. That's it. Okay.
They will be present because they're curious. And the only question that I had was, and this is a strictly political perspective, Joanne being committed to this because her interest in the foundation to support research on PTSD for veterans, use of marijuana marijuana one, is something that's close to her heart. She might speak to that. And, but if we say, we don't think it's going to be a good idea, I think she won't. If we say, "We invite you to do that," she'll appear.
I hope we're not in a position to tell Joanne to or not to do anything. We should stay out.
They're going to be looking for guidance. I'm just saying, and I'm going to let Bob and Chris-
That's a one-on-one. It's a one-on-one. It's not the board providing guidance.
Well, if she's a resident, she can come if she wants to.
Yeah, if she comes, she wants to.
And she's stood up at town meeting before, so she's not bashful.
And we're not about to suggest that she should or shouldn't do anything.
Yeah, that's fine.
If an individual wants to talk to her about something, that's up to them. But as a board, I don't think we want to.
She would not, as a resident, talk about the farm and the details of the HCA. The only thing she would talk about, if it were appropriate, would be the commitment to doing this, to support this research. That's where, that's what matters to her. Other than that, for her, frankly, it's a personal matter of preserving property for more housing. If sold a little bit for housing, they could put another 20 houses in there. They don't want it to be-
And there's also the other issue of scope and whether or not the moderator, if it goes off course, you know, what's on the floor isn't an HCA. What's on the floor is the overlay.
Yeah, I used to have a feeling having them there may be appropriate and, but I think that that's the, I won't recommend that they do speak. I know they're anxious to, but I don't recommend it in this one. And I will say, you're certainly invited to be there and as non-residents, there's a section to sit in and Joanne is free as a citizen to speak. I'll just leave it at that. I won't say anything else.
It might be semantics, but I'm just curious. When we finalize the agenda for Monday's meeting, which we have to do by four o'clock, what is the title? Right here in the work session, we said, "Community Host Agreement." Is that the appropriate title or should we be changing it to, and so what I'm thinking off the top of my head, if we were keeping it, we would say, "Discussion of, well, discussion and update on the community host agreement." But do we need any more specificity with regard to its connection to the warrant?
Just, I'm thinking of, it's really implications of Article 35th, which is the zoning bylaw. Implications of that on HCA or implications of an HCA on Article 35th. The goal of this is to be sure that voters understand that there are implications beyond just changing a bylaw. How many times have people voted for a bylaw because it's been a little thing? It creates a byway. It makes your rights away go from 10 feet to 12 feet. Ninety-nine percent of people don't care on that. This is one of those zoning bylaws that everybody may have a view on and it has wider implications. That's, that's the sense that I want citizens to be aware of so that it's a ten decision and not perceived it unless just running away because we see some money in the corner.
Okay. We'll phrase it appropriately.
Each comes first, though, right?
Is it? Yeah.
Host community. We're the, we're the host community. We are, we're hosting it.
H-C-A.
It's not a cha.
Host community.
It's a cha.
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 Okay. We could talk about this all night, I think.
No, it's not.
And I want to move on. Item two is annual and special town meeting, updates and discussion if needed. I have some things I'd like to talk about.
I'm just going to hand this out. We don't have to speak about this right now. We can talk and fill people in on this later or on Monday if that matters.
Ah, okay.
I can get you a copy.
You will talk about that a little bit.
Sure. Is that with a capital or not a capital?
I'm sorry.
I'd like-
I believe it's with a capital.
Okay.
I'd like to go over some things that, as it relates to town meeting and I want to give you my ideas on things and I'd welcome some input if you disagree with me. I want, I want the selectmen to be somewhat active in town meeting rather than sitting there like a bunch of bumps on a log. And so I want to go through the warrant and, and give some ideas of people who I think might address certain issues as they come up. There'll be some that we don't need to respond at all and, and we'll go from there. I also want to change the seating arrangement of the selectmen at town meeting. I want to put the KNP representative next to the podium so that when she gets frequently called up there by the moderator, she can get to the podium easily. I'd like Kelly to sit to her right because they will be communicating frequently, I think. I will sit to Kelly's right. And then I'd like Mr. Lyons, Mr. Spencer, and Mr. Gant to join me at the table in that order.
Can I just point out, I will have a cast on and I'm sort of, sort of keeping it above my heart. I'm not pointing, but I'll keep it above my hip. So I'm going to have to have a spot, whether it's a chair or something.
Then you'd sit at the end with, with, on the chair.
And I may or may not be able to, I'll have to see. I probably can get up the crutches and get to the podium.
We could rig up a rope and, and pull.
I want a flywire. It's what I'm really looking for.
We don't need to do that.
Yeah, but I'm just alerting you.
So you'll sit at the end, okay? So then what we'll do is we'll have KNP, Kelly, myself, Lyons, Gant, and-
Josh.
And then I can, and then I can switch, you turn. So I will probably have an e-scooter with me and I'll be able to put it up on that, but we'll find out.
Now, I'm going to give you my ideas. I'm going to go through item by item on the warrant and I'm going to do this quickly. And, and if you disagree with me, that's fine. We get to Article Third, and, and I want to preface this by saying that if you agree that you're going to be the person that should be, address this particular subject, you will only do it if you see the need to address that subject. I'm not going to determine whether you feel there's a need to, to address that subject. Article Third, I would expect that Lyons might say something about that if necessary. Article Fourth is Water Department Operating Budget.
I have a clerical issue. I don't have the warrant yet because it's on the book. So, are you going to just put the initials next to something?
Oh, yeah. I'm just writing down.
Okay. Just so you redistribute with the initials and next to it.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Article Fourth is Water Department Operating Budget. I would expect that, I would expect that Phil Knowles and Greg Crum will address that if necessary. Masco, Regional School Committee, Article Fifth, I would expect John Spencer to address that if necessary.
And it's possible Bill Hodges-
Yes.
-will do that.
I understand.
My preference is to have Bill do that.
Okay.
But we'll see. I'm prepared to talk on those if need be.
That'll be your decision, in my opinion. I want to be clear-
Yeah, I'll talk to Bill in advance.
That, in that case, it'll be your decision as to whether you get up and address it.
I, I hear you on that. Thank you.
Article Six is the, is the same thing. Masco.
By the way, Dr. Lyons will not be there this time. First town meeting since he's been away.
Oh, wow. Yeah.
He's got cardiac ablation surgery and it's one of those things that takes a lot of time. And once again, schedules, you've got three or four surgeons who are, you can't change the dates.
Okay, let's move on. Seventh, eighth, ninth, and tenth, and eleventh, twelfth, and thirteenth are pretty much items that probably don't need to be addressed by the board's side. Article Fourteenth, Compensated Absence Funds. I'm going to expect Kelly and the town accountant to address that issue if necessary.
Plus, those are all in the first consent agendas.
Yeah.
It's possible that they'll all be voted together and, I mean, no, any discussion.
That's true. That's true. It depends on how things flow-
Right.
-at town meeting as to whether or not this really takes place. Article Fifteenth is the same. Kelly and town accountant.
Town, well, water tank, number seventeenth would be Greg.
Sixteenth. Sixteenth is Kelly and town accountant.
Oh, I jumped in there.
Seventeenth will be Phil Knowles and Greg Crum if necessary. Article Eighteenth, Town Facilities Repair and Maintenance Fund. I took that on myself. If anybody's got an issue with that, speak up. Article Nineteenth, Cemetery Building Exterior Renovation and Building Repair. Dick, I think you know something about that, so I would like you to do it if, if you think it's appropriate. I'm sure that Parks and Cemeteries people will be up talking about it if it comes-
If necessary.
If necessary. Police SUV Cruiser, Article Twentieth, I would do that unless somebody wants to take it from me. Twenty-first, I would do that unless somebody wants to take it. Article Twenty-second, Fire Personal Protective Equipment, I will do that unless somebody wants to take it. Comprehensive Wreckage Management System, I will do that along with John Spencer. And I think, John, you've been somewhat involved in that.
Yeah, you saw-
Dick, I know that you've got a soft spark in your heart for consolidating records and whatnot, so if you want to get up and talk about that, that's fine. Me too. And Kelly was going to be going over that when we get through this. Article Twenty-fourth, General of the Stabilization Fund. Mark, I'd like you to address that issue, number twenty-four. Capitals, number twenty-five, same saying. Article Twenty-sixth, Lyons, OPIB.
Well, let's pause enough for a second.
Okay.
I, I understand how the board would, my personal viewpoint of OPIB is 180 degrees from how the finance committee, so I don't-
Maybe you're not the guy then.
Well, let's-
Or I don't want to make it, or I would say, if I'm the person.
I anticipate that Karen will get up and speak to these anyway, so-
Sure.
What we're trying, what we're trying to do is just build some alignment. So if everybody's looking at each other wondering who's going to get up, we just know that, you know, Boyd can nudge me and I can nudge Lauren or I'll get up and speak or I'll ask Cap to be real.
I don't want to sit there, I don't want to sit there and say, "You, you, you, you got something?"
No, no, I understand. I just want, I, I want to be, yeah.
That's fine. I understand.
Che, I'm quite sure will speak about something.
Yes. Che is the, yeah.
Yep, yep.
Che was, um, he's been very involved.
If you want me to be the person of a clarification leader or something, but I just wanted to be clear.
You and Che would be, yeah.
I know Dick has talked about it in the past. You might feel compelled to get up. Article Twenty-seven, Tax Differral Grocery Seats Limit. I'm assuming that Tula will address that subject. Mark, you can support her if you feel obligated.
Be prepared. Tula does not like to speak.
Yeah, but then she's really good.
I know. I know. I always have to like say, "She's doing great."
Article Twenty-
So who's the person for, for?
Tula and Lyons.
Lars. Lyons. Yeah. And I'm going to make sure she sits up front this time.
That's right. Article Twenty-eighth is the Tax Relief Fund for Seniors and Disabled. That would be a Lyons thing, I think. Article Twenty-ninth, Veterans Assistance Fund will be Dick Cullinan and Lyons if necessary. Article Thirty-first, Planning Board Bylaw regarding term limits.
Where, 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 taxpayer license and permits?
Did I miss something?
Oh, yeah. License and permits.
Thirty.
Thirty at this time.
Oh, there, I'm sorry. Yeah, there it is. Okay. I, I don't have anybody assigned to that.
That's a really simple, something a lot more procedural thing.
Yeah, that's a procedural thing, probably.
Little legal change.
But if anybody feels like compelled, Dick, you have a quizzical look if you'd like to address that issue.
I mean-
Just tell me.
No, there's-
I mean, Lauren will be right next to the board.
I didn't put anybody's name there because I don't think it's going to be-
Lauren's the one. If Karen or company, if it's, Lauren's the one.
Lauren's just going to stand up and say-
This is procedural. He's, it's not a self.
I'll, I'll talk to it. KP should not be the first one to speak on something. She should speak on something where there's a legal question.
Yeah, I would agree.
This is a legal question because she told us that it had to be fixed.
This is a legal change that is done only for legal reasons.
Article Thirty-first is Planning Board Bylaw and Term Limits. I will address that unless somebody wants to take it away from me. Thirty-second, Marijuana Establishments, that is going to be a Martha and a Spencer thing, probably. Okay? Is that, John, where do you, oh, John, you're going to be on thirty-fifth. Okay. Article Thirty-third, that's going to be a Martha issue.
Yeah, I don't think thirty-second and thirty-third, I'll have to say anything.
That's right. I think so.
But I don't have to say anything there.
Thirty-fourth is Withdrawn, Thirty-fifth, John, that's when you-
Yep.
That's when your act comes up. Article Thirty-sixth, Zoning Bylaw and Sign Regulations. Dick, I put your name there because I don't, I don't really understand where all this came from and why we did it.
Turning up and tightening the bylaw in some ways. It fortunately is relatively minor stuff, but it is substantive to the extent that it's not just the legal reasons. Takes the A signs out.
Citizen Petition on Ban on Plastic Peg. We're not going to address that. Citizens Petition on Secret Bylaw, we're not going to address that. Charter Revision Committee, Holger Luther and I will address that if necessary.
What on the, I'm sorry.
What?
That's thirty-nine.
Okay.
At thirty-nine, yeah.
Can we go back to thirty-six, the sign regs? Is that John Spencer?
Well, I said, "Can't," but John seemed to be involved.
Well, it was, but I, it's pretty straightforward. I think this is going to be a Martha thing.
Okay.
I can imagine the possibility and, Dick, you and I can exchange plans. It's probably in a state if necessary.
Yeah, okay.
I understand what it's about and so on and so forth, but it's very straightforward.
Well, the point is, it's going to be one or the other of you and we don't have to sit and look-
Yeah, no, okay. It's fine. Yeah, that's great.
Who's going to do it. So we're back to thirty-nine.
Yep.
Charter, oh, that's Holger and myself. Art of Free Cash to Offset to Tax Rate, that's a non-issue as far as-
That'd be Karen, which is speaking to that.
Okay. Special Town Meeting. Programming, Article Fifth, Programming Space for Counsel and Aging will be Paul Burke. Article Six, Police Tasers. Dick, you feel okay with that? Article Seventh, Traffic Safety Equipment and Supplies. Dick, you can do that, too.
I have the list. They're updating the list.
I know you're, I know you're with your list.
Neil Levy is, is updating the list to make sure it's current because the old one is two years old.
I think we've been informed that if Gant doesn't get that list, he's not going to talk about it.
He's not going to speak for it.
No, so, that's what you want.
Article Thirty-eight, Highway Dump Truck Sander with Plow, that's going to be Knowles and Bond, probably. That's pretty straightforward. The sources of the funding is the only confusing part of that thing.
And then Catherine, Yegir, and myself will be ready to speak to that if that comes up.
Yep, yep. Peg Access for Cable and Cable Related Funds for Ninth and Tenth will be Kelly and myself. And same way with Tenth, Kelly and myself if necessary. And that's it.
I think this is related, I'm sure she would do this without me reminding, but can we, Kelly, just make actually sure that Catherine has the current funding balances.
The cheat, yeah.
That's in my PM. We're always had, just questions about how much is in this, how much is in that.
I think she already has it ready. I'll make sure that we do.
You're saying that the capital, open door?
For Catherine to have that.
The stabilization.
We talked about that.
That's right. Yep, good. Enough on that subject. Okay. Kelly, you want to talk about that package you just passed out?
Sure. And, and I don't expect you to all read this in the next few minutes. I want to give you, this is the backup. You're going to read it?
Read it, I'll-
Read it?
I'm kidding.
No, I'll put you to sleep and I know you have better things to do and we have to get our meeting posted. So what I did is I included this information. We'll talk about it again on Monday. We'll make sure that there's a discussion item on the agenda for Monday. But what I wanted to provide to you were two documents, three actually. One is, is the, is the warrant article and the motion and the description, as you've already seen, but how it correlates with the two documents we have. I have one document from February 26th, which outlined basically what we've asked this vendor to do for us and that is being, and that's produced in the April 19th memo. And what they've done is they've inventoried and outlined all of the land use department records. They've outlined what they are and they've given us some pricing on available options for equipment, for C plus supplies, and for labor costs. I'm giving this all to you for your own background information. I will be putting, I have some slides and some pictures that I can share with folks as well, but we can always put some of those, I can maybe give those out to you on Monday.
Go ahead.
The, the pictures of the, of the befores and the afters, which really conceptualize visually what we're trying to accomplish. And so I wanted to just give you the backup. And also included in the first memo is a list of all of their clients from all the municipalities. Out of the 351 cities and towns in the state, they've dealt with at least one third of them on doing projects of this magnitude. So they are very well-versed. They came in today. Boyd was at the meeting, there's was Donna, myself, Heidi, and, and another one, so it was Poller and Pat. Pat's actually the owner of the company. She came in, she did the consulting work. So she's written up what she found from that. She came in for about four, four days or so and gave us a, a very good outline of what we have, gave us some ideas of numbers. She's coming up with a, an outline of what she proposes that they can or should be able to do with the amount of money. They charge a per diem rate and they are a vendor on the state bid list. However, because it's under 50,000, we would still need to get three quotes to be in compliance with 30B. So-
They're not on the state bid list.
No, they're, they're a-
They're, they're an approved vendor.
Vendor, which is different from being on the state bid list. And part of that reason is what they do is very specialized and they don't work with any other vendors. So 30B would require us to get written quotes from three vendors. They would be one and we've already reached out to one other vendor and we would just need one more to solicit a quote from to make sure that whatever the scope of the work is-
We don't have to go to bed because it's less than 50.
Less than 50.
That we're talking about less than 50.
What if you can't get three? What if there are three people that do it?
You have to solicit three bids. If you can't get three, then you just use the, the one or two that you have.
And they indicated today that there are very few people in this business-
That's what I would do.
Yeah, so you can probably do a better summary, but I just wanted to provide you the information to complete about the location.
They did a very good presentation. What this package really shows you, in my opinion, is how big of an, of a problem our record system is.
Can I suggest that among things that would be helpful, I'd like to know this in advance of town meeting. I think it's in advance of town meeting. First of all, if they could help us, from their experience, put some kind of shape to, first of all, one of the benefits is version control and another is the management of multiple copies. I'd like to get some kind of thing that talks a little bit about storage. So for instance, let's say it goes to a third the current size, cost benefits of that. The other is version management and the costs of not knowing whether you've got the latest version or whatever. And the third is access ease and availability because I think those are the compelling benefits of this and we need to be clear for that because spending $45,000 merely to scan something and have the same thing in the same way, which I know is not planned, but if that was people's thought, I would have a hard time voting for that. But I think if it's clear that storage costs, ease of access, you can say, if there's a possibility to call something up, there may be an original in storage, but if you have an electronic one, as opposed to having to spend 10 minutes riffling through multiple files to find it, over time, this can save hours and hours of town employees' times as well as better serving. Residents will come in, blah, 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 blah.
Okay, can I have one clarification?
They have photographs that show what the new system could conceivably look like.
And those kinds of things would help.
And it is, and it is incredible what that's going to look like in terms of access and in terms of duplication. And I can tell you, the best, best thing I can do right now is you go into a doctor's office and you see all the files up on the shelf-
Yep.
-with, with a notification on the end of the file that tells you what's in it. That's what this system does.
Yep.
And beautifully organized, hugely advantageous in terms of space, hugely advantageous in, in quick retrieval, eliminating unnecessary duplication. They see five or six duplicate records of the same thing and we're a long way away from, $45,000 doesn't get us there, okay?
No, but it's-
But this gets us started.
And it helps us scope the rest of the job.
And it gives us a roadmap of how we're going to get there. And the end analysis would be possibly to put it on some sort of electronic file. And, and they told us today that there is no question that the electronic file that you're going to want to use in give me microfilm.
Yeah. Oh, microfilm.
Yeah.
As opposed to digital.
Yeah.
Yeah. They said, "Digital, it doesn't cut it. It's not approved by, by the state."
Well, that settles that.
Because if you put it on a CD, for example, five years from now, you may not have a machine that can read that CD. But they said you can always read a microfilm. And it's a permanent record.
So, I think it's great. And one of the things that I think would be a service, and this is maybe later than this first piece, but it'd be nice if somebody comes in- And one of the things that I think would be a service, and this is maybe later than this first piece, but it'd be nice if somebody comes in to be able to give them a print with maybe a date stamp so you know when it was. That's a version control issue. But a date stamp printout from the microfilm if it comes up. And if we end up having a microfilm printer here, that'll be an expensive time. Even if we can email the thing and say, you figure out, you know, get it to Staples, they'll do it full-size.
Well, these people were really impressive.
They don't know how to do that, but that's the kind of...
And they've done it for a hundred towns around the state. So, they've got a lot of experience. And I asked them if they've seen other towns with our kind of problem. And they said, oh my God.
A lot worse.
We've seen towns with so much worse situations.
A tree grew into the basement of one of the towns they worked for.
Through the vault?
Through the vault.
A tree branch had grown into the vault of us.
So...
So, it's a quick...
Yes.
This did not include any scanning, does it?
No.
That's the point I was gonna clarify.
Yeah, I'm just realizing that now this might be the first step towards scanning.
So, this does include that, but do we have a sense if we spend this, what the next amount to do the whole thing that you're thinking of? Is there some sense of that? Because I think we need... You know, if somebody gets into something, you wanna know, we spent this much. It's like going to the architect and getting a design.
I asked today what she thought. And what she thought about what this might cost or what it has cost other towns to do the same kind of thing. And she said north of a hundred. She said at least a hundred. And so, I took that to mean between a hundred and a hundred and fifty by the time you're done, okay?
But it's like saying, how much will I save to buy a brand-new car?
And she's saying, I really don't know because I haven't gotten into that.
I haven't yet. But the order of magnitude is, it's not ten thousand dollars, it's not a million dollars.
That's right.
It's a hundred thousand.
Now, we can soften the bow a little bit because we've got fifty grand in the storage of the Town Hall building project. Record storage, we get fifty grand built into the cost of that building, okay? So, that can pay for the equipment that we need to put these files in.
To answer one of your... A quick question was, what about this? So, they did an analysis and they said, right now, we're using almost, just say, I'm gonna round up, three hundred square feet of floor space.
Really loud.
So, if we wanna go with option one, which is the rolling, like at the doctor's office, the rolling ones, which she recommends, not because they're more, but because you can stash a lot more information there.
A file like that that's on a roll is...
It would only require a hundred and three square feet of floor space.
So, it'd be two-thirds reduction.
Right. And for thirty-two thousand dollars, you would pay for the whole rolling system and twenty-two units, which will cover that whole storage basement area across from the land use departments. By comparison, if you were to go to the standing, non-mobile units, it would cost twenty-four thousand dollars. So, you save eight thousand because they're not moving. She said that you would still save about a hundred eighty-seven square feet. So, either way, you're saving two...
The moving files save a lot of floor space. And we're relatively sure that we're gonna wind up with floor space issues in the new building because the only place we've got to store records is in the basement of the Town Hall where we used to have those yellow tubs. Remember all that yellow storage up in the basement? The yellow racks and that's the only place we got to store the stores.
So, as I was gonna say, a question I have is, I realize the town's pretty much built out, so, you know, sort of new subdivisions, things like that that generate a lot of paper, that's gonna be relatively little. But there are other things that come up that end up...
The road vector.
It'd be really great if we think in terms of, and it's not key right now, but think in terms of a system that's going to allow us to grow out. I'd love to have us say, at our anticipated rate of growth, and they may be able to help us with that, that we've got a hundred and fifty years, you know, wait till the next time that has to be rebuilt, a hundred and fifty years of potential build-out storage.
What, to give you a clue about that, and we talked about that this morning. The first phase of this thing is going to be take our records and put them into their filing system in the basement of the Town Hall.
Gotcha.
Okay? Just...
That's a huge step in itself.
Just the way they exist into their filing system.
Gotcha.
Then the next step would be to go in and go through each of those files and eliminate all of the duplicate stuff. And that creates additional storage space. And, you know, we could reduce our... I believe we could reduce our record retention by fifty percent.
And every time we take those documents, would they basically help catalog them in a form? I think we have to go to the state and get permission to destroy certain kinds of records.
That's true.
And, but they would help set that up so we're not having to have a town employee spend a lot of time cataloging all, even if we end up just filing the form and so...
They're setting this up.
They will do all of that stuff for us.
That's right.
And we talked about the fact that we don't necessarily have the town employees with the time to go through it.
That's why, that's why I wanna avoid...
And they're familiar with doing it.
I was gonna say, they could probably do it more efficiently, faster and so on and so forth. Knowing that we wouldn't be either taking time away from another task or having to add somebody for that one thing.
And, you know, the first phase of this thing is gonna teach us a lot about how we proceed from there on.
And it creates a lot of space. So, there were seven goals to this first phase of the project, besides the practical reality of moving three separate, four separate functions into one central office space. Space reduction utilization, better utilizing accuracy and efficiency allowance for growth. And then accessibility and convenience for users, cost justification, speed of retrieval and then built-in tools for future file management. All of those things she talked about, she also said that even with this new system, there's still going to be the ability to, you know, to... A lot of extra room for growth once we get the right system in place. She went through, she showed us actual copies of the files and how they set it up. It's an alphanumeric central filing system, you know, and alternate... But I have the pictures. You'll be... I'll leave you in suspense because I'm not gonna go back and get them, but what I'll do...
Visualize that doctor's office.
She's gonna send me, she's sending me the electronic pictures, so I'll bring the slides and some printouts to the meeting on Monday so you can take a look. Because when you see that before and after, most people just think it's filing. You look at that picture like, oh my lord, that's incredible. And it's exactly what we need and I've already taken pictures at some of our space already. But just...
So, this is on the agenda for Monday?
For Monday. Can I just clarify?
So, this will be in the back then? I mean, in the electronic?
Well, yes, I just wanted to give you the heavy duty stuff.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah. So, but one clarification though, just because I went through this process, you know, when we first talked about this, I threw a bunch of stuff in the pot and I said, we're gonna make a twelve-course Italian meal. And instead, I decided to scale it back. Let's figure out the menu, let's figure out what we're gonna do here. So, in that discussion though, I had thrown in, you know, the scanning and all of these other thoughts and ideas. I consider those to be future phases of the project. To your point, the beauty of this is we're not saying, how much does it cost to do this whole thing? Okay, we'll do this piece. The beauty of this is that we're starting on a very manageable project and goal. And as we come across future funding sources, we can add to the project without taking on a huge bite. We can take small bites of the apple.
And they'll work with you piece by piece to do this.
A little bit at a time.
When you, when we were moving...
I thought we tried to take everything before we go back to Town Hall, with the...
Well, we were gonna try, but the time just isn't...
We're not scanning records right now.
We're not.
We're organizing, we need to...
I heard the words were, we need to do this before we move back into Town Hall so we have an efficient move and have space in that.
That was the original...
That's not the case anymore.
Not the case anymore.
Thank you, okay.
We're gonna take our records and store them in theirs.
And this will happen, this will happen back at the new Town Hall.
Well, we're setting up new equipment and then we'll set up the new system and the new system and records will go into the new building and the new equipment when we move back. It's a little bit of both. We might be saying two different things, but...
What's happening before we move into Town Hall?
We're purging and we're setting up this system so that when we move back into Town Hall, we'll have the equipment to store the new records.
We'll purge as much as we can before we move. But to say that we're all gonna be purged and cleaned by the time we move back to Town Hall.
Not all of it completely, but before we... We're not gonna be moving back like multiple copies of the same records. If we get this system, they've already outlined and inventoried everything that we've had. So, they've told us and they'll tell, they, in this, you'll see where it says, yeah, there's multiple copies of this and that. As we're packing and getting ready to move back to Town Hall, we'll be purging any duplication of records. And this is gonna help us identify what's where and what we can then move in.
So, part of the move is to purge the records as we're moving?
Yeah. Duplicate, duplicate records.
I don't think we're gonna have the ability to purge much before we move.
Okay, I'm with that. And I just heard it the other way, but that, I can understand. I got it, I got it.
By the way, I asked a question about when we get down to the end and we wanna put this stuff on electronic storage. And I said, we'll scan all this stuff. No, 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 she says. The state doesn't accept scanned messages because that creates an electronic file and the state won't approve that stuff. She says...
You can't destroy it.
The only thing, and you can, it's an electronic file, so you can do all sorts of things with it. So, she said the state won't approve that kind of stuff. She said the only thing that state will approve over and over and over again is microfilm.
That's great, that's what it is.
Microfiche, she said, is basically the same thing.
Right, they're just individuals as opposed to tape.
So, scanning is corruptible, microfilm is not, so it's the technology base. So, even though we're looking at scanning as a part of the solution down the road, we started out saying, oh, we're gonna scan everything and then we realized that that wasn't cost-effective. It'll be wasting time if we're gonna scan to look at records.
Ultimately, for access, it might be nice, but the micro...
But that's a phase two or three of this project.
Well, that's a long way down the road in my opinion.
So, the state is somewhere around fifty years behind reality technologies. I worked my way through college doing microfilm with the boss about the life of a double zero.
They suggest a microfilm for records that you're not, that you can't destroy. So, vital records, you can't destroy those, but if you microfilm them, you can... The microfilm in the system it has to go through needs to be certified by the state. So, you don't necessarily have to keep every...
But it appears that the state is really concerned about the storage of electronic files.
Yeah, no, I can understand that. It's so easy to photoshop things to your convenience, so...
Going back to Town Hall. We should have designed a Town Hall with a roll of storage in the northwest corner of the basement.
That's right.
And that included truck work, this floor needed to be...
Lowering the floor.
It needed to be based with heavier support and things like that. That is gone.
That is gone because of the value.
So, how are you gonna do this roll of stuff now?
Say what?
How are you going to, how... We took it out and now we're putting it back? Is that what I hear? We took out the, this compact storage. Are we putting that back in to do this now?
How do they get back in there?
Well, what we're doing is we're gonna use the storage space that we had the records in before it was high-density storage.
How's it paid for if it was taken out by value engineering?
There's no structural...
The high-density storage was taken out because of the fact that, for several reasons. First of all, value engineering. Second of all, we had to lower the floor to do that. And the contractor and the architect said, don't go in there and lower that floor because you're gonna create all kinds of problems. So, what we're in now is that storage area where the police cars used to be stored.
But that's the same level as the area that we were going to be in?
That's right, same level.
So, are we going to high-density storage? I understand we're going to high-density storage when you talk about rolling things.
Ultimately, but not yet, not yet. High-density storage comes away at the end, in my opinion.
I thought you were telling me about all the files that we're gonna see on this high-density storage.
No, that's...
Well, they're gonna mix them down.
Those are paper files. Those are paper files in paper folders.
In the high-density storage, they're rolled back and forth and...
Not high-density, forget the word high-density for the moment. These are, these are filed, filed folders.
Traditional files that take all this space that doesn't save anything. But it's in the proposal here, is something left in this space?
Instead of our cabinet being this tall, it's gonna be this tall. And instead of it being one, it's gonna be two rows so you can maximize the space. That's what we mean by rolling.
By rolling.
Yeah.
That's different from high-density storage.
By having one in front of the other and they can move back and forth.
In order to roll, you need a sort of...
We have it on the floor.
Rails on the floor. They install them.
And the floor needs to be leveled.
They install them, they level them. She said we shim them.
We buy the...
She said we do that.
It's on the same high-density.
But we're...
No, well, yeah, that's...
Is that the fifty thousand?
But start here.
It's the installation of roll files.
That's gonna be the fifty that we've got in this. That's a fifty-dollar budget item that we've got in the contract for rebuilding Town Hall.
There's money for storage.
We can buy that equipment and put it in that room.
Great.
But just for my own understanding, how is it different? How is rolling this one different from the high-density storage that we...
Well, because high, when you, high-density storage, when you say that to me, I'm thinking of microfiche.
No, 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 no. The high-density storage that we were going to put in the northwest corner was for paper files.
Well, then we're, then I'm using, my mind's got a different idea of high-density storage than yours. What we're gonna wind up with is paper files stored in a different fashion than we have... She said, you've got file cabinets that are, that are, so many file cabinets and that's not the way to store things today. You gotta do it in this fashion and it's beautiful and it works and it saves a ton of space.
So, the very first step is going to be to take all the existing records.
Yes.
When they get moved, they will end up in a new filing system.
Yes.
And then another contract at another time.
Yes.
They will come in and they will go through each.
It's not gonna get done, right?
Well, we've gotta put them in.
It's all right.
We're gonna put them in high-density stories when we move.
They'll be in high-density stories, but they'll all be there, Dick. And it won't be high-density in terms of microfiche.
Yes, I'm gonna show you all the pictures and I'm gonna ask the question before Monday, what is the difference between high-density storage and what we're proposing?
There we go.
Okay, and I'll clarify on Monday. Because we're running out of time, we have to post our meetings.
If we're going to have this, if we're gonna have this in time for the move, then they've got to be doing construction work.
We've gotta get started.
We've gotta tell consistently that we're gonna be doing construction work in their, in their zone. Just be careful because that's...
We're not constructing anything, we're just lining within and putting it in the basement.
Okay, that's the one. My name was... But you wanna...
I understand what you're talking about.
Why don't you start talking with...
There's no drawing. There's no consecutive work going on in that space area. That's all the time. So, we can go in there.
He needs to know electricity's down there, he's trying to do this. Is all the wiring done for the new lighting down there? I doubt it, I doubt it, okay? So, this is gonna take more than a day apparently?
I'll talk to him. Oh, no question.
Well, I don't know, I don't know, but it seems more than a day.
We just gotta get, we gotta get the approval for forty-five thousand, that's what we've gotta do.
And the forty-five thousand includes the money for the files, physical files.
No.
These ones, the fifty thousand for the physical files.
Not the file cabinets, just the system and the supplies.
The file cabinets? That's in the Town Hall building project.
Yes. That he has to do.
You had twelve of those.
I know.
Okay.
Um, do we need to go into executive session?
I don't think we do.
Oh, that's what I thought we were doing, that's why.
Okay, well, I'm gonna cut this short because I'm gonna put this on the agenda for Monday.
You gotta go, you gotta go.
Take care of it.
I'm gonna put this in the agenda for Monday. This is the draft. Take a look at it, you have any questions or issues and yes, I'll send it to you in the form. But I can't, just to let you know, I've given this to the union, I need them to get back to me. The only thing you need to know about is that there's two things and this is what I'm sharing even though we're in open session. You can't distribute this, but I, what I'm gonna tell you is number seven and eight on this front one was something I threw out to them. I'm not gonna lose sleep if they say no. It's something that would make it easier for us, but it wouldn't, it wouldn't, I'm just giving it to them as an option. I'm trying to consolidate, make things easier.
You're saying read seven and eight carefully.
Seven and eight carefully. But it might not show up in the final version once I get back from the union.
That's new, okay.
Okay? In Monday, I will present this to you if you have any thoughts or minor edits that I can do without the union thinking I'm trying to pull it over on them. Please let me know.
So, we'll have an executive session on Monday?
Is that okay then?
Yes, yeah.
Motion to adjourn.
Yes.
Okay?
Well, here's the thing, if we have an executive session, if we do an executive session and we don't have, this is everything that we talked about. The only thing that's different is seven and eight. Maybe what I'll do is I'll put on an executive session just in case there's any follow-up that needs to come.
Put it on, put it on.
I'm gonna put on an, I'm gonna put an open meeting vote as well in case there's no issues and we can just vote it and be done at a regular meeting before this, before the town meeting.
But if this is a document you put in, have they agreed to it?
I'm waiting to hear back. They agreed to all of the terms except seven and eight, I'm waiting to hear that.
So if you say they've agreed to seven and eight and if we think they're good, then we can just take a vote on the whole thing. Otherwise, we'll go into executive session and talk about it.
She said, she just said that if they don't agree with seven and eight, she's not losing.
I'll just take it out.
But you'll give us a recommendation to vote on at the time?
Yes.
Okay.
Please make sure we have that, don't rely on you that's thing like a posting.
Roll in this thing, yes. Yes, oh, yes.
In this posting.
Yeah.
Okay, now.
Motion to adjourn.
No, no, no.
Will you settle that, withdraw that?
Yeah, I told you.
Floor is yours, yes.
You've got nine minutes.
I told, no, we're done, we're done. I told Kelly today that I wanted her to post a meeting for the working session on the twenty-fifth, which is next Wednesday.
And I will not be there for that, as you know.
Uh, what time, Kelly, did we set? Four? To wrap up any loose ends that we've got to go over and take care of before that meeting. Okay?
To the extent that.
And I know that Mark is going on to talk about minutes at that meeting and approve all existing minutes at that meeting. He wants to start with a clean slate after the election.
I think that's a great idea.
Because I may not be there.
We're, we're, we're the body that has the minutes that should reflect on the minutes that we created, so it makes a lot of sense to get that done.
That's right.
Once a year.
That's why he wants it.
Congratulations for filling in nineteen, your twenty nineteen.
I mean, there's gonna be a different slate of offices for sure.
It's gonna be, have to, minimally another.
Minimal.
And you'll have five people.
Yeah, and we'll have five people.
Oh, there's five people. All right, my psychosis kind of.
So now are we prepared?
Now you can, now you can say.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, all in favor.
Wait, we just said it, Dick, for the third time, Dick said it. Well, he withdrew it, so I had to make sure. Dick was a hot D.
So Debbie, you get the hosting gun, first job.
It's empty, I took this stuff out.
Well, I do too, I do too, but I keep, I keep.
Dick, this is your copy.
I tell Debbie, I tell Debbie, there's a bunch of stuff behind tab fifteen.
After I'm opposed.
So she doesn't go behind.
It always comes with that material, okay?
That always comes to my book.
Yes, 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 good idea.
So I'm gonna hang you around in case you do, because I went through the ones that you done, they're really good, they're working, keep right through. And they can be distributed, I think it'll take us fifteen minutes.
Okay, all right.
And I'm gonna wait, I'm gonna wait three minutes with Debbie.
I have, is that okay?
Oh, thanks.
Good thing it is, save anything.
By the way, I told you, we're picking, we are at the point where we're.